Okay, it's 6:30. We'll call this meeting order. Jill, you want to give us our roll call?
Yes, can you state the time again? I'm sorry you didn't write it down.
It is 6:30.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Andy Milson?
Present.
Mark Fennison?
Present.
Joe Schei?
Present.
Kevin Flynn?
Present.
Justin Olson?
Present.
And Mayor Smith is asked to be excused ahead of time because he had a meeting -- different meeting tonight.
Okay. Okay, roll call's done. Mark, would you open with prayer tonight?
Our Father, we thank you that we can come before you tonight, Lord. As we meet tonight, we're thankful that we can meet liberty and freedom. As we do meet concerning this subject tonight, we pray for wisdom that you direct our thoughts. Help us do that which is best for the citizens here. And, Lord, we're also mindful to think of our young men and women who are in the armed forces that view their lives so that we can have liberty. We pray for them tonight. We protect them, bless their families, bless each one here. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
Andy, you want to hand over the pledge of allegiance tonight?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, since I'm the mayor tonight, we're here to discuss the ordinance 2014-16 about the extension on the marijuana ban. And this is a public meeting, so it's basically open to the public. If you want to speak, there's a sign-up sheet over there. And when everybody has signed up, I'll take a look, see how many there are, and then we'll get started. Judy?
Will you be able to speak? If there is questions, will you be acknowledged in the crowd?
Yes.
Okay, so if you don't sign up, if there's still something comes up, you will be able to raise your hand if you think so.
Yes, that's right. This is supposed to air it out both sides, okay? So if we're ready to start?
We have seven people on the list.
Okay. We have seven people. I would -- just five minutes a person sound reasonable?
I would pay.
Okay, so we'll start. Let's see, is anything I have to do? Okay, we are all set to start then?
I think council is supposed to agree on the time. I don't know if -- I don't think it needs to be a motion, but does council agree? About five minutes.
What do you think, guys?
Your wife had an observation.
She said seven.
Seven? Okay, seven minutes. How do we feel about that? Seven minutes.
Excellent.
Okay, seven minutes.
Thank you.
I can see the clock, so we'll go with that. Jill, who's first?
First is Philip Chantot. Can I say that right?
Yes. Welcome.
I'm neither a lawyer nor a medical doctor. I am a landowner here in the city of Vator. My personal perspective is I have a illness, Crohn's disease, currently in remission, that I almost died from twice. Use of pot has been proven to reduce debilitating symptoms of Crohn's disease and other diseases. I personally have not tried it because I was -- it was not legal at the time I was sick. One hundred years ago, the federal government declared pot a poison having no medical value. It is still a federal crime even to test for medical value even today. In 1998, the U.S. government applied for a patent on cannabis oil. The patent was granted in 2003. To get a patent, the Department of Health and Human Services had to prove cannabis worked as stated in the patent. The patent title, Cannabinoids as Antioxidants and Neuroprotectants. Defined in the patent, antioxidants kill cancer cells and bacteria among other tasks. Neuroprotectants are treated -- or treatment for many central nervous system disorders, including neurodegenerative diseases, effects of diabetic neuropathy, stroke, trauma, brain injury, and spinal cord injury. This pot grow facility will be an indoor greenhouse. Facility will be fenced. No person under 21 will be allowed employment or entry. As far as crime -- criminal behavior, it is no longer a crime. The Benet Plant Company, a mile down the road, is a very large greenhouse company. How damaging has it been? There will be no real difference. With business that brings rev -- without business that brings revenue from outside a community into the community, that community dies. This community is effectively a ghost town. I've heard we can do better with 30 acres of zoned industrial land. Do you personally own that land? What right do you have to deny legal usage of privately owned property that currently zoning allows? At present, the corporate tax in this country is 35 percent, the highest in the world. There have been no new manufacturing plants built in the U.S. in over 30 years. This facility may provide around 25 good-paying, permanent jobs in an area that has no industry. These employees will buy homes or rent homes in our area. When the population increases, the opportunities for other businesses to come in here also increases, thereby producing additional tax money to support the community. This facility will certainly pay property taxes. In summary, denying the owners of this facility the right to use their property productively is a violation of the constitutionally protected rights. It sets a precedent that reduces all of our personal rights to property and the freedom to operate a business. This facility will provide job opportunities in an industry in a town that has none. To deny this business on religious or moral principle is a crime in this country and a violation of the constitutional protected rights. Illness is stated to be helped in the government patent. Inflammatory autoimmune diseases, limiting neurological damage following stroke and trauma, the treatment of Alzheimer's disease, Parkinson's disease, HIV, dementia. If you combine all the autoimmune diseases as a group, they are the number-two cause of chronic illness in America and the third-leading cause of social security disability claims following heart disease and cancer. The above diseases are all treatable with cannabis oil, a product with a patent held by the United States Department of Health and Human Services. At the time of this patent filing, there were 371 medical patents pertaining to cannabis. If statistics are correct, about half the people in this room will be treated medically with a cannabis derivative in their lifetime. Crohn's disease, celiac's disease, diabetes, Graves' disease, inflammatory bowel disease, lupus, multiple sclerosis, rheumatoid arthritis, cataracts, and the big one, cancer. When your health improves and your treatment includes a cannabis product, you will thank God and your doctor, your God for having created cannabis, and your doctor for having the wisdom to properly use it.
You have 30 seconds left.
Thank you for your time. And I have the Google thing for the patent. And I have copies of this for the council. They would like it. And also the secretary, so she doesn't have to break her handwriting about it.
Thank you.
This is the patent. You can find it on the web.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Jill, who's next? Who are yours?
I'm a citizen in Vator. My name is Joy Flynn. I am against marijuana or any type of growth or use of it in this town, and I support the board's ban on it. That's what I have to say.
Who's next?
I'm Donna Rogers. I live on 10th Street in Vator, and I'd just like to say that I am against the use of marijuana, and I don't want to see that plant going here. We have such a small town, and we're just now coming back from the brink of nothing, and I can't see where that is going to attract families to come into this community. And I don't think medical marijuana, probably the oils that he's talking about is probably good, but that's not smoking. Smoking it is recreational, and people getting high all the time. I certainly see enough of that in my community, especially right around where I live, and I've suffered the consequences of somebody else's actions because of their stupidity and their drug use and their alcohol use. So I am against it.
Who's next?
Liz Hicker. Could I abstain until the last?
No.
Would that be possible?
I don't think -- you think we're just going in order?
My name is Elizabeth Hicker, and I live in Vator. And I also am against marijuana. I come from a nursing background. I have children who are in the medical field. And we have had quite a few discussions about marijuana and some of the side effects. I've done considerable research in the medical aspects of it because of my interest. And the gentleman who spoke first, I need to let you know that the big breakthrough is the DNA, a person's DNA. If they have -- if it's compatible, the marijuana can help you greatly. However, if you do not have a DNA that is compatible with marijuana, it will not help you. In fact, sometimes it will do quite the opposite, and that's something you need to look up and research. The neurological problems of marijuana, it depends if it's recreational or whether it's medical. Inhaling marijuana has its attributes, and it has a lot of disadvantages. It's much like smoking. And you -- the disadvantages of the smoking, of course, is the same as smoking or inhaling nicotine. It will affect your lungs. And the other thing is neurological. You know, we are now beginning to see some accidents that are involved with marijuana. And with people taking their marijuana, they're also drinking with it. And that's a double whammy. And I found a couple of interesting articles. One in particular that I have in front of me was from May of this year. And it's talking about the legalization news of medical marijuana, and I will read parts of it. Marijuana may help reduce frustration with traffic congestion, but it's not doing much to increase traffic safety in Colorado, where a new study finds a dramatic increase in the proportion of marijuana safety and in proportion to drivers involved in fatal accidents since the commercialization of medical marijuana there in the mid-2009s. There's also more evidence through the University of Colorado School of Medicine researchers using data from the National Highway Traffic Safety. And you have to realize that once you ingest marijuana, whether you smoke it or you take it internally, marijuana will stay in your system for quite a long time. And in fact, it is quite a long time. It can be found in a hair follicle months after a person has taken marijuana, smoked or ingested it. And that doesn't mean it's going to affect after a couple of weeks because the effects of it in the brain, the neurological part of your body, it is excreted out. So in about -- I don't know the exact -- I can't say without looking that up. But there is a period of time where it stays within the body, but the side effects of it do not affect the body or the function of the body. I want to say that the plant will not benefit the city financially. We've already gone through that in a previous episode here. And there is no income that will be coming into the city. The taxes, unless it is dispersed through the state, will not benefit us because, as I understand from a previous comment from those who wish to have it, is that it will not be sold in Vator. It will go outside of Vator. It will be -- this will be just simply a plant, and it will be grown, processed, and shipped out. So the benefit will be 100 percent to the plant owners, not to the city. And as far as the restrictions within the city, we have a creek that is -- well, all of our creeks actually are very vulnerable, and it takes all of us with living in the area to be acutely sensitive to our surroundings and to the land. And I'm sure because of the owner of the plant that he will take precautions that no leakage will go out to the creek. However, in looking at the research and the history of that particular lot, there used to be a wood manufacturing company, a logging company there, and there was a huge pond that was put in there. So therefore, that pond was filled when it burnt down. It was filled with a lot of log and debris to try to fill it over. Now, in that recourse or that amount of time, you look at the aquifer of the land, and a lot of whatever is put out will seep into the land and go into the creek because that particular pond was connected directly to the creek. So that's something else you need to take into consideration. And I do have some history about that, if you would like it. Also, the violations of our rights in our country. You know, we were developed as a country for religious freedom, actually. That was the main recourse of coming to America. And because of that, we are a country. But freedom is not free, ladies and gentlemen. It is not free. And if we all go our own and do our own thing, we will soon end up like the Arabs in their country and their small, little clans who are now fighting against each other for the right that they want. They are taking possession. They want. Why? Why? It's because they want more and more and more. So in trying to figure all of this out, there is no right, there is no wrong. Yes, there is. We are a community. We are a people. And if we don't have rules and regulations to keep us in the right recourse or the stream of our society, we will lose our society. We'll lose our families, which is happening now. And we need to stand firm together. We need to build our country. We need to build our city. But we do not need to bring in more than will destroy it. And statistics prove, not in here, but on paper, on all of the research that I've done, is that most people generally, if the kids start with DNA, it then goes into harder drugs because you like the feel of DNA. Not DNA, what am I saying? I'm saying cannabis.
Liz, you have a minute left.
Okay. It will just simply escalate. There will be more and more. And remember that our children up to a certain age are vulnerable to their neurological development. If the children -- if a child smokes or intakes marijuana for a certain period of time in their development stage, they can never -- they can't overcome the recourse of that to their system and their mind. Thank you.
Leanna Horton. I'm going to have to leave and go do cupscaps.
Were you making a comment?
I wasn't able to have enough time to. I have to go do cupscaps.
My name is Leanna Horton. I live right outside the city limits. The business that's going is pretty much kind of within eye shot from my house. I'm actually against it. I have a medical assisting degree, and I do work in a medical facility, so I do know that there can be some medical value to marijuana. However, I also know that marijuana has bad side effects, as with any substance that can be addictive, such as alcohol or any kind of type of drugs. Marijuana can lead to stronger drugs. I actually have a nephew who's 23 years old, who is now a heroin addict. He started out using marijuana and went to heroin. He's over, I think, hopefully, still in a treatment facility for his sixth stint, trying to get rid of heroin use over in, I believe it's Minnesota. So I do know that there's the bad part of marijuana as well as the good. As far as the facility, you know, I'm an American. I don't want somebody telling me what I can and can't do to my property. However, if what you're doing to your property affects surrounding neighbors and their ability to be able to go outside and, you know, do the things that they want to do. For example, I lived in Longview for the majority of my life, and there's the joke of calling it Long Pew because of fiber and all the smells that it puts out. And I know for a fact that marijuana has a very powerful stink to it. And so I don't want to be able to be gardening in my backyard or going out on my porch on, you know, because I moved out the country so I can enjoy that and enjoy the fresh air. I don't want to go out in my backyard and have to smell marijuana growing nearby because, you know, I don't want to have that stink. So I agree. You should be able to do whatever you want with your property as long as it doesn't affect other people's rights. And I don't want to have to be stuck in my house because of the smell. As far as crime goes, marijuana is actually still illegal in the majority of the rest of the United States. So being the small town that we are with very little police force that we do have, they may come thinking, hmm, possibly easy target. When they find out that, you know, it sounds like it's going to be heavily enforced, great for him, but what about all the surrounding people? Because then we think, well, jeez, we came all the way out here to try to break into this place. Let's go see what we can find in the local neighborhood. And with the fact that we have little to no police force, you know, the response time, I for one have had a window broke out in my car by, I have no idea what, passerby or whatever. It was like 35 minutes before a sheriff showed up. So, and of course, I'm outside the city limits, but we have to wait for the sheriff. So if somebody were to decide to break into my house, you know, nobody's going to be anytime soon coming to my house to help me. The second thing is, as far as kind of the smell and stuff goes, too, I actually have a friend that works, I work with, and she is actually highly allergic to marijuana, which was something she found out by going to a concert. They were smoking marijuana, and she actually went into anaphylactic shock and had to be rushed by ambulance because she's actually allergic. And when somebody comes into the medical facility that we work at and we smell the marijuana on the person, we warn her, and she has to actually leave the office area and go into a separate room because she's so highly allergic. Just that smell and that aroma upon them can make her start to feel itchy in the throat. And so I don't know how that would affect her from -- I mean, I don't know if this would do anything, but my concern is, too, that she's never going to be able to come to my house again if this goes in because if it's an allergy like hay fever, I mean, like I said, I have no idea. We don't know the extent of her allergy. But if it's kind of like a hay fever and, you know, you just have to be within a local area of something, somebody's hay or somebody's hayfield, and, you know, you have the allergic reaction, what's to say if she doesn't come to my house that she's going to end up having an allergic reaction because of the aromas or the smells or something? So, like I said, that's kind of far-fetched, but again, we don't know the extent of her allergies. But it would infringe upon my rights to have a good friend come over because she has an allergic reaction. And then also, as far as Mr. Milton is concerned and his company, I really feel like the majority of the people that live in this community are invested in this community personally. And I don't know that he's raising his family in this area.
One more minute.
Okay. I don't know that he is going to raise his family in this area. I personally think that if we put this in our community, it's going to be a bad thing for it because I do recall school clothes shopping with my children. Whenever we'd say, you know, oh, what school do you go to? Da-da-da-da, we're from the Vator area. Oh, there's like a stigma around that name. There used to be. I think that that's been improving. However, I think this would be a major step back. And I just don't think that's a good thing. And then, last but not least, we found out that the property next to us that used to be called Brooks Nook sold by a company called Cana Americana LLC. And I have no idea if that's somebody that's a mutual partner or something. However, when you type that in and Google it, a whole bunch of medical marijuana kind of permits and all this stuff pop up. So I'm just kind of curious as to whether or not somebody got that property for extremely cheap, $110.5, and are planning to maybe put in a processing facility there or something there as well. So that's just something that I kind of came across when I found out the property adjacent to me had sold. So I'm totally against it, and I hope that this community does not make the mistake of allowing it to go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello to you who don't know me. I'm Brandon Norton. I own the industrial property we're all talking about. I have a positive message tonight, and it's simply that I think we all have a lot more we can agree about than to disagree about. I think that certainly everybody on the council has been open that they disagree with me about marijuana as a product, and we've seen a diversity of opinions about that tonight as well. And I don't want to make light of that. That's a significant disagreement for sure. But when you get past that, that's about it. I think that we could all agree that we would love to see a more vibrant economy here in the city of Vator. I think that we could all agree that bringing quality, good-paying jobs to Vator would be a big part of improving the quality of the economy that we all want. I think that everybody on your side of the table would certainly love to see more tax revenue coming into City Hall. So that's the common ground that I'm talking about. And to get beyond the personal feelings about, you know, do we like marijuana? Do we not like marijuana? You know, is it in your hair follicle thirty days later? I mean, we can make it a whole lot simpler and just say that I don't think anyone in this room is going to be a major player in deciding whether marijuana is legal in Vator or not. I think that this was started at the state level, and it's going to end at the state level. This whole debate between state versus local, Washington versus Vator in this case, I think that's going to end up either the Supreme Court or the state legislature. Which really just brings me back to my positive message that I think that however those chips fall, I hope that you guys like me and willing to not worry about who's a winner, who's a loser. I think that, I certainly hope that you're willing to, like me, roll up some sleeves and let's look at that common ground and make Vader the best Vader it's been in 100 years. I'll certainly be around if you guys have any other questions. I'm happy to talk about either particulars of my development, plans for the property, or any other questions, concerns that you'd like.
Judy, sure?
May I ask a question since Brandon's up here and Liz brought up this? Every business pays taxes.
Yes, they do.
Brandon, it's a business, I am a business, it all filters into Vader.
A certain percentage.
Correct. So, I just want to make it clear that Vader does get money off of every business, whether it's this or me.
There are a lot of ways in which Vader is going to benefit, but certainly the money is among the top. I think the concern that I've heard is that there is no money earmarked in Initiative 502 directly at the local level. That's true. So, the money as it's written now that comes in is through property tax, B and O tax. I mean, it comes in a lot of ways, there are a lot of jobs being rid, obviously. I mean, if I bring 25 good-paying jobs to town, do you think that that's not going to have an impact on people here? People are going to have more money. Those people are going to spend money, they're going to be at the cafe, they're going to be spending money in other businesses. They're going to move to town, they're going to want to hire people to mow their yard and everything else. So, the big fix that I think is coming from the legislature is probably to earmark a certain portion of that tax money that's a direct tax on marijuana. And it will funnel it to the local level, either in the form directly in support of law enforcement or directly to the local level city government. So, that's I think the fix that, that the state is looking at.
So Mr. Milton, are you going to be hiring then people from the local vicinity? Are you going to employ people from the local area?
You better go.
Because that would be the only way it would benefit locally.
I would love to hire, you know, I mean, why do I want to import workers? I want to have people right here in the city of Vader working for me, doing well. Of course I do.
What ever happens to your German auto?
It's coming as soon as I can get water hooked up.
So it's still going to be down there?
Absolutely, this isn't either or. I never said otherwise as far as German auto, I'd bring it in as soon as I can bring it, be done.
Are you affiliated with the people that left property next to us?
Never heard of them. Liz?
What about the DNR and the forestry service and being so close to the creek? Have you gotten permits for that?
Permits for what?
Permits to be that close to the creek with your business and growing outside?
It's news to me that DNR has a problem growing marijuana at my location. So I have cleared the liquor control boards screening and there's nothing, there's no issue I know about. And to address your question that you mentioned earlier, no one cares about that creek more than I do. I own like 2,000 feet of that creek. So, I'm the last person that's going to be dumping anything in the creek. You know, I take care of that creek, I fish stuff out of that creek. I just dragged an engine block out of there today. So, I'm trying to clean the area up. The, any kind of a product that's going to be applied, you know, in the course of business to cultivate marijuana is a very different world than what you're probably used to seeing in commercial agriculture for other mainstream crops. You know, you're not going to be airplanes flying overhead and dusting crops. I mean, these things are so valuable and they're so micro-managed on a plant-by-plant basis that if you apply anything, you're literally putting it directly on the plant. You're not going to go squander that, just like let it go and let it blow around in the air. Certainly, you don't even, it doesn't even make contact with the ground. So there's no, there's no pipe that leads from anywhere on my property, you know, dispersing these chemicals out in the creek or anything, it just doesn't happen. Yes?
Have you come up with any way to stop the smell from going out to neighboring areas? Or, and then also, have you applied for your permit and under what name?
Brandon, you have 30 seconds.
I think that the smell issue is largely overblown. I think that the, most of the smell in an open area dissipates pretty easily. I think it's easy to abate those issues. That's the kind of thing I'm pretty willing to work with. You know, if it's an indoor operation, it's pretty easy to put filters and clean your air before it even leaves the building. So, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Have you applied for your permit and under what name?
My brand is Atlas brand, and yes, I've applied.
That's time.
So, I'm certainly available, you know, outside my seven minutes too if you guys have other questions, concerns. Thank you.
Next.
And then last, we have Don Eddings.
Don Eddings, Vader resident. If I recall right, the people in the state of Washington voted to make marijuana legal. And I didn't vote yes, I voted no. But the voters have cast their ballot and I don't understand it. And then the other thing is, they're not going to sell marijuana in Vader. I don't understand who I'm listening to here tonight. Mr. Milton's going to sell it to the state and then it's going to be just driven it all over. What's the big deal? Nobody, these guys in town that smoke dope, they got their own plants and everything. We have no law and order in this town to bust them or anything. But that's the way life is. And then the other thing is, I forgot already. But I, I, I got it now. For some unreason, the taxpayers have put over $100,000 in water and sewer down there. I would like to see a return on my money. You know, you guys sit up here and, Mr. Milton, I don't know what the problem is on the water hookup.
Neither do I.
I talked to Shirley Cook and she danced around it real quick and said it was your problem.
Yeah, I bet she did.
Yep, and once again, you start selling water, Mr. Milton pays taxes. You sell him sewer, he pays city taxes. And you guys are all wrong, where he's not going to pay taxes. I feel like I'm taxed to death and I get nothing for it.
That's it, anyone, anybody else?
That's it.
Okay, the council here, we're supposed to consider, make a consideration to continue this discussion at a council meeting or to drop it, so. Jill?
The, just to be clear, the, it's not a final decision by council, but it's councils, we're supposed to come up with councils' intent.
Right.
And then it will be decided that when we present the findings of fact.
Hey, Mr. Flynn, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Why don't, instead of fighting it, give you six months or a year and then study it?
That's what we're doing, we've been taking time to study it. If you give...
No, let him grow it and see what effects it has on him.
That's proven never to work. Yes, ma'am?
That was actually one of the things I forgot to say was, you know, marijuana legalization is in its infancy. And so there really hasn't been any studies done to find out what the effects are to property value, what the effects are to increasing crimes and things like that as well. So, you know, there's no way of really knowing how it's going to affect the community because it's at the beginning of being legalized. So, that's what I'm scared of. I don't know what's going to happen.
I understand. Any other comments?
When, when you guys are done hearing comment, you say, I forgot, but you have to say, public comment period is over. That means no one else gets to make comments.
There just wouldn't be any. The public comments are over, so we'll make a decision right now. My thing is, we continue in the process we're going. And it's not scheduled, that's why the agenda, it's not scheduled for the meeting this week. But I think it's going to be on the agenda the next meeting, not this one tomorrow night, the one after that.
Right.
Right. So I say we continue moving in that direction. Andy?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Milton a question, is that we can't answer, I can't answer. Because what is your reason you don't have water down there yet? Do you know?
I have no idea, I wish I did, Andy, but I have been trying for effort to get water there. And they won't hook it up. I've had, I've had an engineer certify it up one way, down the next. I've paid thousands of dollars just to follow every direction the county gave me. I've done everything they've asked and they won't hook it up. So here is it.
Yeah, well, why is your brand already down the road?
Oh yeah, it's, it's been, the engineer's been out, he's tested my system, my fire hydrants in. It's all there on the ground, it's got its wire on top, it's got its chlorine powder in the middle, it's ready to go. So, there's nothing I can do apparently on my end to get them to hook it up.
At least then you can start drilling up.
Okay, let's, back to, public comments are over. Anything else here in the council, what you guys want to do? Mark? Are we in agreement that the, not tomorrow night, but the session after that, we're just going to be up for discussion?
Yeah.
In agreement.
Andy, you agree with that? You agree with that? Meeting after this, tomorrow night, we're going to discuss this, bring it up again?
Yeah.
Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, that's it, that's our decision. So that means this meeting at 7:12, Jill?
I just want to be clear on the record, so council is not intending at this point to want to repeal the ordinance, is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Sure, they stand and then we will discuss this to make that final at the board meeting that will come in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you everybody for coming.